I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're really pleased that everyone is with us this evening, particularly these members of our fire and police departments. It's always great to see you guys here and give us an opportunity to recognize everything that you do for our community, so thank you. Okay, would you please begin our meeting by calling the roll?
Osbacher.
Here.
Harold.
Here.
Allenbaugh.
Here.
Jeffers.
Here.
Robinette.
Here.
Roland.
Here.
Zamfordino.
Here.
We're going to deviate from our normal agenda just a little bit and go ahead and get started with our special presentations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. You can tell this is a very special occasion. We've been looking forward to this date for some time. It's culmination of a process that was taken with utmost seriousness and in-depth reviews, preparation of papers, lots of discussion, interviews, and so forth. And I'm grateful to the respective chiefs for the fire division and for the police division and other members of their particular staff groups and so forth for all the time and effort that went into this process. And so with your concurrence, I would like to proceed, and we have four tonight, four promotions. And we're going to start first with the fire division. And I'm going to ask Anthony Smarsley, better known, we know him as Tony, and his wife Sarah, to please come forward, along with Chief Mormon and Lori Treter, our municipal administrator. Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to administer the oath of office now. Tony, if you would please raise your right hand and say after me, "Aye," in your name, please.
Aye, Anthony Smarsley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To do my duty.
To do my duty.
As fire lieutenant for the city of Bowling Green.
As fire lieutenant for the city of Bowling Green.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the charter of the city of Bowling Green.
And the charter of the city of Bowling Green.
I will protect.
I will protect.
Safeguard and preserve life.
Safeguard and preserve life.
Health and property.
Health and property.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
And faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
Congratulations, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Chief Mormon, you cannot escape here. Would you like to say anything at all? I hope I can absolutely say anything at all, but...
I just want to congratulate Tony here this evening. I mean, looking out the back of the room here, seeing all these fellow firefighters, a true testament as to how well Tony's liked at the fire division and how hard he works over there to make everything better for the citizens here at Bowling Green. So, once again, Tony, congratulations and well done.
Thank you, Chief, very, very much. I'm going to use a little Aussie terminology here because I think it's really pretty special when you look in the back of the room here and around the room here. You might refer to them as mates, right?
Absolutely. It's in every one of them.
And you know what it means. And the same for the fire and police division as well.
Yeah, we're brothers-in-arms.
You are, indeed. Well, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good luck. Now, we're going to shift gears just slightly to the front row, not going in the back of the room here. And Adam, would you please come forward? Adam Scaff. Did you have your family here?
Nobody came here after dinner. They said...
Are you all solo today?
I do appreciate the members of the fire department showing up.
Do you feel unprotected or good?
No.
Way to go, Adam. Congratulations. I'm very happy for you. And I know I'm speaking on behalf of members of city council and the city administration here, or you and your mates here that are gathered here tonight. So, I'm going to start, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Aye," in your name, please.
Aye, Adam Scaff.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and support the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold and support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and laws.
And the ordinances and laws.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
Adam, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
Brian Houser, and your promotion to sergeant. And we're very happy for you. Congratulations to you. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Aye," in your name, please.
Aye, Brian Houser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold and support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and laws.
And the ordinances and laws.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
Brian, congratulations. Sergeant, way to go. Michael Bengala, Brian, would you? I'm sorry, your family is here?
No, they live all out of state.
Okay, very fine. Okay. Michael, I know you have...
Unlike these guys, people like names.
Well, congratulations. I'm really happy for you. Got everyone here now, the support team, right? Way to go. Way to go. I'm very happy for you. And Michael Bengala is being promoted to lieutenant. And after we're through here, we'll be hearing from our municipal administrator and our chief here, please. Tony, I think so. So, if you would please raise your right hand and say after me, "Aye," in your name, please.
Aye, Mike Bengala.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold and support.
That I will uphold and support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the ordinances and laws.
And the ordinances and laws.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
Of the city of Bowling Green.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
Mike, congratulations to you. Lieutenant, way to go. And now, I'm going to invite Mrs. Lori, would you like to say your name, and then ask the chief?
You know, council, every year, we go through an extensive budget process. And when we're studying facts and figures, sometimes I think we can get lost in the numbers. And we love to be able to bring these folks to you to show that connection between that budget, between the laws, the ordinances that are done by the legislative body, and these wonderful folks who are out there every day upholding those laws, fulfilling the duties, the responsibilities of the city of Bowling Green. As you can see, we have fantastic people here at the city of Bowling Green. We couldn't be more proud of them. And we thank you for allowing the time in your meeting to cite these promotions and to congratulate all of our wonderful promotions this evening. We're very proud of all of you. Congratulations.
We have 41 officers in the Bowling Green Police Division, and we have nine from the chief on down to the lowest ranking sergeant who are in our command staff. And I just want you all to know that we need leaders in our agency. And these three officers are true leaders in our agency. They have done and gone above and beyond the call in so many different ways. The two new sergeants, we took them right out of our detective bureau. They did a fantastic job for many years down there. And Lieutenant Bengala, thank you for your leadership as a sergeant and for what you were able to accomplish as far as our community outreach, training the community, and response to active shooter and those kinds of things. I mean, this is the kind of, these are the kind of people that we look to as we, as they go up in rank to lead our agency. And I couldn't be prouder of them. And what they're, I can't wait to see what they bring to the table and what they'll be able to do in the coming years. So, thank you all for agreeing to step up and taking these leadership roles. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of council, that completes the promotions, the swearing-in ceremonies. And I know they're eager to have some photos taken right now, I believe. And so feel free to step out and have photos taken, or you're welcome to stay.
Thank you, Mayor.
And thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Where the hell is...
What's the seat thing tile?
Oh, you didn't do it.
I didn't do it for them.
You were just anticipating.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Joe, see your face. Pretty warm, huh?
Thank you. Back to our regular agenda. The minutes of the meeting that was held on February 4, 2019, were distributed to council prior to this meeting. I would ask if there are any additions or corrections to these minutes. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes and the minutes are approved as presented. Okay, is there correspondence this evening?
There is no correspondence.
Thank you. Moving on to lobby visitation. Kay, has anybody registered for lobby visitation this evening?
Not this evening.
Very good. Thank you. We are moving then to the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019, and ending December 31, 2019. Ordinance amending and adopting section 3301 N of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio regarding salary schedule established. Ordinance amending and adopting section 33.03A, the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio relating to the pay for school, police, interns, and civil infractions hearing officer.
Thank you, Bruce. I have two ordinances from the Public Utilities Committee. First, an ordinance authorizing the exchange of real estate with the Wood County Board of Developmental Disabilities, and also an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to accept an easement for utility purposes from Howard M. Gray Jr. and Linda S. Gray. Moving on to official reports. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, before we begin, I'd just like to take one moment, if I could, and congratulate you on your State of the Union address this morning. I didn't see that Mary's here, and I'd also like to extend my thanks to Mary and all the folks responsible for organizing the event. As always, it was a tremendous event. But Mayor, I was particularly struck by your remarks today. I thought that your observations, as it relates to the positive trajectory of our city and the challenges in front of us and all the many opportunities, were right spot on. And I just wanted to take the advantage of this opportunity to thank you not only for your remarks today, but for your leadership throughout your tenure as the mayor of Bowling Green. I know this isn't the end, but it just felt, it felt like it was kind of an end of one thing today. So anyways, I just wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to say those things to you and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I deeply appreciate your very, very thoughtful comments there. It's been, it's been an interesting day, quite a day. I suspect, I think, I shouldn't say I think, I know. I talk way too much today. But if you have any questions of me, I would be more than happy to try to answer them. Otherwise, I do not have a report this evening. But I know that you share with me a special sense of joy to see these outstanding individuals here come forward for their promotion. And I know that you appreciate the time and effort that goes into this, this whole process. It's something that's been very enlightening to me from way back when I first became there. It's, I've been deeply impressed with the amount of time and effort and energy that's put into this whole process. And I don't know what the general public might think of how we do these things, but you all know that it takes a lot of time and effort and preparation. And it's personally, speaking just for myself, I know it's, it's been very enlightening, right from, right from the very beginning to go through each one of these particular steps and the amount of time and effort that goes into it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mayor Edwards?
First, how many years of public service have you had, Mr. Mayor?
You really want to know again?
I do. I want everyone to know.
Oh, well, 58 years.
58 years.
It started in January of 1961, when Nadine and I left for Washington, DC. And I had the great joy of working for the late Honorable Charles A. Moser of Overland, Ohio, amazing individual, Overland College. And so he saw, I guess, something in me or a belief in me that I could be helpful to him because I was, you know, right off the college campus. In fact, I continued my education at American University there. But yes, it was 1961, a very exciting time with the start of the Kennedy administration, the monumental snowfall. We worked our way through that whole process. It's very interesting. And apartment in Alexandria, Virginia, and in the midst of that storm. And so I have lots of good memories from those days before then I returned and started my career of university administration and some teaching. Thank you.
Well, that's, that's astounding, Mr. Mayor. And also, just as a note, you did not speak too long this morning. Your words were eloquent, to the point, and it was very, very well done.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
If I may, Mr. President, if I may, I mean, again, Mayor, again, thanks. I thought your talk was informative, but more importantly, it set a positive tone of cooperation. I was particularly struck by both you and President Rogers. And the comments, I think your comments pointed to one, one truth that we all have to get our arms around, that Bowling Green is just one community, a number of large parts that are, that are interdependent, and that we must work together for the betterment and success of the whole community. And I think you highlighted that greatly. Those parts include BGSU and city government, Bowling Green City School, businesses, industrial base, create the job. And I thought both of you together just hit the nail on the head and set us a great effort.
Well, you're welcome. And thank you for your comments there. I, you know, one of the things I did try to hit on too is the history of city of Bowling Green. And these things just don't happen. Right? Represent the combined effort of a lot of people, the belief and, belief in working together, seeing the larger picture of our, our community. I know you appreciate that. Working. Thank you. Collaborative spirit. Obviously, I'd like to say it's alive and well in Bowling Green.
Certainly is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treter.
Good evening. I would like to request council's consideration of moving into executive session at the end of your meeting time. Two items to, for consideration, a property matter and a personnel issue. So, appreciate your consideration of that. And wow, Mayor, you set us up so well and council to talk about collaboration, because the rest of my report is about a collaboration. And I'm actually going to take my time to invite a special guest up to present something to all of you. We, as a community, have for a long time talked about a branding initiative. And it's something that has taken many different forms. It's been in different groups. It's things we've talked about, our identity. And last year, work began under the leadership of the Convention and Visitors Bureau to achieve that goal. They had many partners along the way. This really has been a collaborative effort, and the city is thrilled to be a part of that effort. But for the big reveal, I will turn things over to Wendy Chambers with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. She does have a fast-moving PowerPoint presentation. Since I'm yielding my time, I don't usually take more than about five minutes, Wendy. So, you have to, if you're, you're going in my stead. But we are so excited to share this with you and to put our support behind these efforts. So, Wendy Chambers with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thanks, Wendy.
Okay, who's going to be the moving part? Oh, it's this key. This one, the one that's working? Okay. So, you'll just hit this space. If I could, thank you. Okay. We cast a ride net when we started this process a year ago to find the company that we wanted to work with, the branding company. And we decided on a company called Hand Shoe out of Greenville, Ohio. And she has promised me I can do this presentation in five to eight minutes. Who's going to time me? I'm going to go long. Okay, this evening I am presenting, are we up and running? Okay. You can see the Think BG, our brand for Bowling Green. We're going to show an overview of the work we've, we've developed, including the research and the brand positioning, brand messaging, and the visual identity. Over the last six months, we've been working to develop a new brand identity for the city of Bowling Green. The result is a new, energy-filled brand image and message. This work is designed to sway perception in the minds of current and prospective residents, new visitors, and new businesses. Why are we doing this? The city is not sleepy. It is engaged, accepting, and hungry for smart strategic growth. Our brand should plant the seed of perception in the minds of everyone who hears about us. Here's the messaging that we've, we're delivering. We aren't who we thought we were. We're better, cooler, and more progressive. We welcome all people from all countries to live, work, and play. We are a small city with big-city mentality, open to possibilities, open to innovation, open to everyone. Small towns don't always think small. Sometimes their vision is unlimited. Bowling Green, Ohio has the guts to break barriers and the heart to bring others along with them. We are the up-and-coming college city in northern Ohio to learn, live, grow, work, and play. Bowling Green, Ohio is a city where you can be you. We are open-minded, forward-thinking, and ready to grow our city culturally and economically. We are full of colorful opportunities and people. A small city with big-city mentality. We are educated, eco-minded, and innovative. We are not Bowling Green, Kentucky. We are BG Ohio, thus the new logo. We've developed, developed a color palette that reflects all of the colorful opportunities and people that exist here. BG Green is our lead color. It reflects growth and our dedication to environmental consciousness. Our new logo is simple, strong, and elegant. And it helps to differentiate us that other Bowling Green down south from the other Bowling Green down south. Our hope is that the new identity will be adopted across the board by the entire city so we can present a unified front and help create a sense of pride within the community. Here's our campaign concept. Think big. Think growth. Think BG. Throughout our streets, places, and public spaces, our shining spectrum of unique personalities living and working together are what create our community. We are big thinkers and hard workers. We are, we're a real-life kaleidoscope of connectivity, a free reflection of one another. We're doing some incredible things in Bowling Green, Ohio. We're generating the future, one big thought at a time. You'll start to see images and messages pop up throughout the Visitors Bureau that reflect this campaign message. We're going to challenge people to think BG in a variety of ways. In 2019, we're exploring ways that this message might expand into marketing tactics and advertising. Here are some consumptual examples of outdoor advertising. This is my favorite. And you'll notice the kaleidoscope shake that's going through a lot of the BG logos, and that's where that kaleidoscope effect comes in. Okay, I think we're there. We're also exploring how the new brand can be utilized consistently throughout the city's various entities. This is example of how the brand identity might be used for the Bureau and transitioned to be used by the city. So, "Oh, that Bowling Green," this would be a Visitors Bureau application. And "Welcome to Bowling Green, Ohio" would be more of a city application. We're also exploring how our message will be effectively delivered via social media. And here are a few examples that you may see in 2019. Take a second to look at all those. Think BG, explore, immerse yourself. I can't read all the little ones there. Moving. And we're wrapping up hope that brand messaging can be wrapped into marketing, print, and ads. And these are some of the ad specs that we've been given. This is just the beginning of a lot of creative that Hand Shoe has been giving us. There'll be much more to come. This gives us an overview of what they've created so far. And of course, finally, I like this one. Think, think born-ready, think girl power, think BG. Think big, think growth, think BG. And finally, we're getting ready to develop series of wearables and branded merchandise to help generate community pride and potentially create an additional source of revenue through merchandising. We do have a few stores in Bowling Green that do sell some Bowling Green, Ohio merchandise. But we thought, taking it one step further to, you know, expand our logo and get the marketing out throughout the community, we can all be walking billboards for ourselves. We can wear the T-shirts. There's a nice little tote bag, bumper sticker, window clings, and hats, all kinds of merchandising. I've been looking into candles and some other things that we might be able to do. But this has been an accumulation of this past year. And of course, finally... I like this one. Think born ready, think girl power, think BG. Think big, think growth, think BG. And finally, we're getting ready to develop series of wearables and branded merchandise to help generate community pride and potentially create an additional source of revenue through merchandising. We do have a few stores in Bowling Green that do sell some Bowling Green, Ohio merchandise. But we thought taking it one step further to, you know, expand our logo and get the marketing out throughout the community, we can all be walking billboards for ourselves. We can wear the T-shirts. There's a nice little tote bag, bumper sticker, window clings, and hats, all kinds of merchandising. I've been looking into candles and some other things that we might be able to do. But this has been an accumulation of this past year. I'm so excited to launch this all with all of you this evening. And I'd be happy to take any questions. I could also send this PowerPoint to you via email if you'd all like it. We all need to work together to spread the word. Many of our organizations and the city and the Bureau will all be adopting this as our new logo, so we're pretty excited. Any questions?
Questions for Wendy.
Wendy, I just want to say, I would have no facility for this kind of thing. I didn't know what to expect, and it's just really impressive. It just strikes me really well right off the bat, so thanks a lot.
That was our perception, and Sandy can tell you. I mean, when we first saw the creative several months ago, we were all like, wow. And they gave us things to choose from, and we liked bits and pieces of one and bits and pieces of another, and they merged it together beautifully. And we're very happy with what they've come up with.
And the company we chose was outstanding, too. They came to Bowling Green, they interviewed people in restaurants, on campus, around town, and really, really took a lot of time studying what Bowling Green really is and who we are. And came back with thoughts and ideas that were really exciting, and I think they've done a good job of saying who we are and what we want. And I think we're not a small city, very energetic, just busting at our seams to grow and be better.
I agree. Think BG.
Great. So there's another Bowling Green?
There is. I can tell you, if I had a dime for every call I got with a twang in their voice, and it was somebody obviously wanting to find out something about Bowling Green, Kentucky, I always used it as a marketing effort, however. Well, we have a car museum, and we're a university town. So I always got that plug-in for Bowling Green, Ohio, when those phone calls would come through. But we are Bowling Green, Ohio, and this logo is going to, it comes right through with the state of Ohio back. And this is kind of an on-trend. I don't know if anyone's seen the Ohio Find It Here logo that is now going on, the signs as you enter into the state of Ohio or exit. It's the all-encompassing brand for the state of Ohio. And this is that same kind of concept, where we can take this logo and everybody can use it, from every business from A to Z. Any other questions?
Thanks, Wendy.
Oh, let me mention, thank you, Sandy. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, we are going to be having a brand launch party on March 28th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It will be at the Four Corners Center. And there will be much more than this with the brand creative that we will have on display in our gallery. So everyone is invited to attend.
Thank you, Wendy. It would be great to have that, if you could email that to us.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
And I'm sure I went over the five to eight minutes. Don't tell Leslie from Hand Shoe.
Yeah, thanks.
So that completes my report, subject to your questions.
Questions for Lori.
Lori, you and the mayor both used a word. It was something like camaraderie or something, how we get along locally. And that's fine for local politics. Most of the things we disagree on, on council, do not divide on party lines. It's a lot more fun and lucrative to make fun of the other party at the national level. But unfortunately, I have to take this opportunity to give credit to Representative Latta on a particular issue. AMP encouraged us to write a letter to Mr. Latta a couple of weeks ago regarding tax-free municipal bonds. I don't know which committee would hold a public hearing for that. Oh, I guess it'd be the Finance Committee. I didn't think to hold a public hearing on that. Joe, can you? But seriously, this is a very serious issue. It could cost us lots of money if municipal bonds lost their tax-free status. It would put money into the federal coffers and take it out of our coffers. So all of us, Republican or Democrat, would not like to see that happen for Bowling Green's sake. So I got to give Mr. Latta credit for supporting that. So my question for you is, do you know how far along the process that bill is? Do you have any sense of its chances of going one way or the other?
We don't have an update at this time, but we will do our best to find out the information and get back with you. Yeah, Brian will be in DC at the end of February, so he may get an update then. He'll be meeting with legislators while he's there.
Great.
But thank you for supporting that and studying that issue seriously. Again, that is an example of collaboration, when we can bring issues and discuss them in a productive way and work together to advocate for our community. It's important. Thanks.
Thank you. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor. Questions for Heather. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley. Questions for Kristen. Thank you. City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh. Thank you. Utilities Director, Mr. O'Connell. Other questions for Brian?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think that we should have Wendy speak at every meeting.
Thank you, Brian. Public Works Director, Mr. Kraft.
Kind of theme here is ongoing. Our roundabout work is ongoing. May not notice a lot of times driving by, but utility work on the side is ongoing. I think they're finding out how tough and arduous the Bowling Green Rock is, the bedrock. And that's slowed them down a little bit, getting the sewer in the ground. The wet well is set, but the water line and the electric lines are still ongoing. Pothole work is ongoing, all this week and next week probably. And then we'll see what tomorrow brings, with probably even more potholes after that. The downtown water line project started down at the Lehman intersection, heading towards downtown. We've crossed over to the other side, and as we get closer, it'll get a little bit more complicated as we get in the heart of the downtown. So far, things are working out fairly well. We do have a bid opening coming related to the downtown. That's the paving portion of the downtown. That'll be a bid opening, be March 7th. So we'll see how those bids turn out and get that kind of rolling down the track so they can jump in behind when the water and sewer project is complete and put the downtown back together. So I think it's kind of interesting with all the branding, that kind of our two most major intersections, the interchange and the downtown, are all getting fixed up at the same time to kind of put a new shine on them. So that's my report. And if there should be questions, I may.
Frank, quick question. The Columbia Gas work that preceded the water line and sewer work that you're doing now, extended east and west off Main Street on East and West Worcester, about a block. Is the water line replacement going to follow that same?
Same footprint, yeah.
And then the repaving restoration will also include those areas?
Exactly. The Main Street will go pretty much from Oak to Lehman Orway area, and then on Worcester from Prospect to Church. And it'll capture all those, our water line footprint will be nearly identical to the extensions of the gas line work.
Great.
And they knew that when they started.
I was hoping to hear.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Additional questions for Mr. Kraft?
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. That concludes our official reports. We will move on to council committee reports. We have council committee reports this evening.
Mr. President, we had a meeting at 6:00 of the Community Improvement Committee to discuss single-use plastic bags. We received a lot of very useful input during that meeting and have scheduled a follow-up meeting for March 4th, also at 6:00.
Very good. Kay, do we have that on the calendar?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that. Additional council committee reports. Okay. Kay, would you lead us through the reading of legislation, please?
Yes. Legislation for first reading. Ordinance number 8749 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019 and ending December 31, 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we give ordinance 8749 a second and third readings.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes. The motion passes. The rules are suspended for ordinance 8749.
Ordinance number 8749 for second and third reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2019 and ending December 31, 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8749.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Is there any discussion?
I just know what this has to do with land acquisitions.
Kay, would you please call the roll?
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8749 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8750 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.01N of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio Regarding Salary Schedule Established. Ordinance number 8751 for first reading. Ordinance amending and adopting Section 33.03A of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio Relating to Pay for School Police, Interns, and Civil Infractions Hearing Officer. Ordinance number 8752 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the exchange of real estate with the Wood County Board of Developmental Ordinance number 8753 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to accept an easement for utility purposes from Howard M. Gray Jr. and Linda S. Gray. There is no legislation for second reading. Move on to legislation for third reading. Resolution number 3726 for third reading. Resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio to file an application and execute a contract upon grant application approval under the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program as authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hollenbaugh.
I move that we adopt Resolution 3726.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. Resolution 3726 is adopted. Ordinance number 8742 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing an agreement between the city of Bowling Green, Ohio and the Wood County Regional Airport Authority.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8742.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8742 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8743 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts and/or participate in state-of-Ohio or federal purchasing programs for the purchase of vehicles, equipment, and the completion of projects, as well as the trade-in or outright sale of vehicles and equipment no longer needed for municipal purposes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8743.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8743 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8744 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to enter into a contract or contracts with specified vendors for work that may exceed $50,000 annually for calendar year 2019.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8744.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino.
Yes.
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8744 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8745 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for sidewalk improvements, pavement striping, de-icing salt, and improving streets, alleys, and other public ways in the city of Bowling Green, Ohio.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we adopt ordinance 8745.
Second.
It's been moved on second. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher.
Yes.
Harold.
Yes.
Hollenbaugh.
Yes.
Jeffers.
Yes.
Robinette.
Yes.
Rowland.
Yes.
Zanfordino.
Yes.
The motion passes. Ordinance 8745 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8746 for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to execute an agreement with Core Pro for